I'd like to go ahead and open up the Warranton Board of Alderman Meeting for Tuesday, July 3, 2018, and ask you to please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item will be consent agenda.
We have the work session minutes from June 5, 2018 regarding the North Highway 47 sidewalk discussion, regular meeting minutes from June 5, 2018, work session minutes from June 12, 2018 regarding budget, and the regular meeting minutes from June 19, 2018.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Holdman, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like the regular meeting minutes from June 19 to be excluded from the consent agenda and voted on later.
Okay, they can be removed. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items with the regular minute meetings from June 19, 2018 removed to be discussed later. So moved. Second. Motion made by Alderman Deloitte, signaled by Alderman Schultz, we'll call that.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes. Next on the agenda will be the introduction of David Campbell, the building inspector.
Mayor and Board of Alderman, this is David Campbell, he's a new building inspector. He started on the 20th of last month.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Next, we'll be hearing from the public. If you'd like to come forward and say anything, we ask that you come to the podium. We'll give you five minutes to speak, please state your name and your business. Not seeing anyone, move on. Next, we'll be hearing from the Board of Alderman.
Mayor, I'd just like to update the board today at noon, the chamber board met. Some of the highlights of the meeting were that their plan is, at least as they voted today, is to have a booth at the Fall Festival. They are wanting to do a better job of making the public aware of the chamber and what they do. They'll probably be, they're trying to decide on what type of fundraiser they would make that, whether it be shirts, T-shirts, some warrant and theme with that, or they're right at the kind of the beginning stages, but I did make contact with City Hall and I've got them an application and they'll be getting that filled out and sent back. For the board's information, the public, the chamber has 160 members. They also, again, are excited about doing more, so they have voted to have some gift bags made up, and that will be given to each new resident as they come into the city, anyone buying a new home or moving into the city. In that gift bag, they'll have giveaways from all the different businesses that care to participate, and I would encourage the city to put together any information we might have in regard to city services and phone numbers and contacts and all that sort of thing. And then the final piece to that, it was about an hour and a half meeting, I updated their group on city projects, including the Service Road Veterans Memorial and our thanking on the opening of the new interchange. They very much want to know the date of the ribbon cutting so that the chamber will be sure to have representation out there when the new interchange is dedicated, so.
Are you sure we can accommodate them with that?
That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Next, we'll hear from the mayor's comments. I'm gonna bring one topic up, just to get a consensus for the next meeting. I'd like to bring up the age that is allowed to go up to the pool unaccompanied. I've gotten several complaints and calls lately that we don't have enough restriction of the age that is allowed to go up there without parents, and just left there for the lifeguards who would be at the babysit all day. And I think that's something we do need to address. I'd like to make it a discussion topic, or even take it a step further if we need to.
Well, I think if we're gonna do that, I think it would be helpful to have somebody from the management team, the management company who runs the pool up here to address their perspective on that.
Not a problem. See, I already went up there and talked to you, so I'll have, I'll walk and ask you to come down before that. That's what kind of prompted it, was the complaints, and then I went and talked to staff, and they said they are dealing with issues, so I'll have them come down and address that.
And I think, Mayor, is that, am I correct in that that is a city policy, it's not a pool management policy?
Correct.
What decision is made there?
Right.
Has to be done by the city, not by the mayor.
Basically enforced, the rules are split and enforced by the city.
Right.
You are correct. So, I'll contact the management if we can put that on the next meeting, please, at least for, if nothing else, a discussion topic. So, next item would be the approval of Board of Alderman Committees. Any discussion or anybody would like to speak on it?
Well, is this really a functional need, or required to do by statute? Because it seems like whenever we do anything on a committee level, everybody's there anyway. We really don't have committee meetings like we have historically in the past.
You would've asked that when I'm slightly crippled because Chris is on vacation, but I do believe by statute there are certain committees that have to be formed. But if I'm wrong, I'll correct myself next meeting.
Yeah, it just seems to me, and Greg will remember, years ago we ran, there was very active committees, and now we tend to, since we have an administrator, we have a little stronger leadership, where a lot more is done by staff, and so the board generally comes together as advisory to those decisions, as opposed to committees making certain decisions.
We can obviously look into it.
Okay.
But in the meantime, are you comfortable approving? Any other opposing, or? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Board of Alderman Committees.
Second.
I believe it was Alderman Schultz first?
Yep.
And then Alderman Miller. We'll call that.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Passes six zero. Items removed from the consent agenda, I believe there was the regular minute meetings from, meeting minutes from June 19, 2018. I'm sorry, I'll kind of leave that for you to lead off.
I just requested it because I was not, I was absent during that meeting, so I don't feel that I can, could vote on that in the consensus agenda, so.
Okay, understandable. So I guess we can go ahead and vote separately to approve the regular meeting minutes for June 19, 2018, with that feeling you can just abstain from the con-
That's what I intend to do, abstain from that.
Thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular minute meetings for June 19, 2018? So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, signaled by Alderman Costello. We'll call that.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
I abstain.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes five, five to zero with one abstaining. Next on the agenda will be the request for exemption from time constraints for loud noise for the Warren County Fair.
Paul O'Me contacted me last week and he apologized, he thought he had turned this in the week when he turned it in for the fair parade. This is just in the event that if rain would happen, it would be delayed for a few hours, he wants to go past that 10:30 timeframe that's in our, that's put in code, so I think he put it to midnight.
Yes. I did speak with Paul, and the only reason I spoke with Paul is he's in the middle of the fair, obviously, so he was not able to be here, he asked if, if there's any questions, hopefully I can answer them in some way.
Fred wants my vote.
Are there any questions for this?
No.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for exemption from time constraint for loud noise for the Warren County Fair. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, signaled by Alderman Costello. We'll call that.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes. Motion passes six zero. Next, we have an update on the Tribute to Veterans Memorial, and I believe Mr. Webb, you are here to speak to us?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Name is Wendell Webb, I'm of the Tribute to Veterans Memorial, I'm the building chairman and also the historian. I thought if the phase we're in right now, I should come and give you an update on where we've been in 2017 and where we are right now in 2018. Basically, last year, we signed the lease, we got the contract survey, lease agreements all taken care of, we had the first phase of excavation and soil samples completed, storm soakers installed, parking lot drains installed, south parking lot poured in December of 2017, agreements with MoDOT on overflow parking and service area, and we had to renew that this year on the west north side of the area in order to move some dirt and to clean up that area, and we did the soil remediation on the memorial site as a result of the testing. We found we had about five feet of plastic soil, right underneath where the memorial was going to be placed, and so we had to take care of that, and we did that last fall. So in 2018, basically, the west parking lot and driveway with access to the south service road has been completed. If you've been out there after about nine o'clock at night right now with the light we have for, and daylight saving time, they come on a little after nine o'clock, but you can see the parking lot lights, all the security cameras are up and functioning, and so I go out there about every day and look at all the cameras and see all the people who have visited the sites and monitor that. And again, we're looking forward in the future of if we ever get Wi-Fi or Internet or something up there, we would like to link as part of that system in the future. The Monument Company has been under contract for about a year now, the fabrication has begun, and going over all the engineering drawings, we have, we found a deficiency, so we created an engineering change order between the contractor to put in the footing and the Monument Company, got that resolved, and made that part, and voted on that by the board to accept that. Pavers and benches all have been ordered now, we wound up selling 1,010 pavers, all the blank pavers and all the benches and stuff that we purchased are on order, in fact, the manner of all of the four by eight pavers that people purchased are now finished, they've been engraved and ready for shipment. Gift bricks out of Wisconsin, who does that for us, they're going to put all the pavers, all the blank pavers and stuff on pallets, they're gonna store those for us, I give them a three-day phone call and a truck will be here and deliver all the pavers and stuff for installation. Been very good company to work with. The monument wall, if you've been out there in the last couple of days, you see we've been out there again digging actually in the monument area, if you had a picture. Up here, you can see the monument wall was right here, that took a two-day pour, we poured the basic footing and put the rebar and stuff in, and today we poured the top part of the footing, finished that off. This here is where the statues, the battlefield cross, and the American flag receiver were installed in there today, and so that is all complete now, and let it dry for a couple of days, I'll take the concrete samples in, I took in three canisters today, I'll take in a few more canisters Thursday to make sure everything is at the right hardness. And as of right now, the middle of, basically, of July, the Monument Company will deliver the capstones, which would be a grade granite, it's in two layers, four inches, 18 feet long in smaller sections, they will install that and put in the threaded rebar, and then mid-October, the actual monument wall will be delivered in three pieces, 18 feet, be, six feet wide, six feet tall, and a foot thick, will be brought in and placed on that, they'll bring the cranes and stuff and actually set the monument wall, and after that, it will be, the wall will be completed. Before the wall comes in, as soon as we get the caps started, we're going to bring in the concrete company again under our contract, because this contract here for the monument was with the Monument Company, that we didn't, we just paid a fixed price for installation, fabrication. I did pay for the statue as part of that. So they will come in and pour the paver cradle, paver cradle will be the entire circle around that, and that's gonna be the basic footing and also the, allow us to drain water off of the site and stuff so we don't collect water and have freezing, and then inside that concrete cradle is where we will actually put the pavers, there'll be three quarters inch of sand, up to an inch depending on the grade, and then the two and a half, two and a quarter inch pavers on top of that, and it'll be all vetted down and sealed and stuff for the, for all the pavers installed in there. At the same time, when they pour the cradle, they will pour the footings for the benches, and they also will pour the footings for the other six service flags receivers around the area. We've also this past week negotiated irrigation, they're gonna come in and do that, and so we have irrigation on the basic stuff, we're gonna have other irrigation on the north, west, and south sides, and that will be able to be turned off once that gets established, or do a drift and stuff for that to keep the site nicer looking, lush and green grass and stuff like this up around the monument area, we'll actually get that sotted, and then we'll continue doing the irrigation and stuff up there. So, right now, and then after that, we would like to go ahead and do the overflow parking, and our basis right now for that is to do a gravel paving, gravel area for that, and in the future, we might look at paving that and stuff, but we'll have to work that out in the future. So right now, our estimated dedication for the memorial is gonna be October of this year. We will go ahead and dedicate the memorial with the statues installed, all the flags and everything like that, and then there'll still be some landscaping work, but that's not gonna stop us from doing the dedication, so. We're working, we've got a dedication committee put together, so we're trying to pick a date and, but our target is October 2018 for that. Basically, we've been partnership with some corporate supporters, I came out with a short term where they could benefit, most of you read in the paper that the Schnucks Market Incorporated came through and gave us $30,000, that really put us into the comfort zone as far as financially and completing the memorial. I have two outstanding areas that I'm working with some companies on to help pay for some of the pavers and also to cover some of the electrical costs, and that would put us more into the comfort zone. Long-term, I'm starting to think five years out, we would like to do signs at the interchanges, on both of them, to show where the Veterans Memorial is, and some of these corporate are willing to work with us on that and with MoDOT. We have to have sustaining support, care, and maintenance, I've already started looking at the budget, what it's gonna take to maintain the flags, just normal wear and tear, right now, we're looking at a budget of about $5,000 to $7,000 a year just for flags, and then we have to pay for the water and the electric. Now, everything electric is all LEDs, but we still have to run the irrigation system and stuff, so there is extra cost and stuff there. Some other things, that will be able to support events like Memorial Day, I've already been contacted by the Run for the Wall for next year, they're trying to get an ambassador team in here, and they'll be voting on that to bring them here for that weekend, and then if that goes well, then the following year, this will actually be a stop place for refueling food and possibly overnight stay and stuff in this area. We also will look at Independence Day, National POW MIA Recognition Day, Veterans Day, including other historical events during, from here on out for, to have there. If you've been up there, you notice that I had electrical outlets put on every one of the light posts, they're all perspect GFI and stuff like that, so we can use those for speakers and lights and bands and stuff like that, so, to have there, so we, all that stuff is in place. We will, gonna update our website support for memorial and sponsorship, and then another thing is, we hit this morning at the Veterans Coffee, we had a group come in, and I've been working with other groups across the country with the other VSO Veteran Service Organizations, as one of my other jobs is the National Commandant of the Marine Corps League, we are working how we can help the young veterans and their families. So one of the things I have talked a little bit to our corporate sponsors about is maybe setting up a trust here where we can actually have community project to help veterans of families for scholarships, to send spouses and kids and stuff to college, and get trade schools and stuff like this, so, thinking ahead of what we're gonna do after this, because our little committee and stuff is not gonna go away, we have to maintain this memorial, and again, I'm glad that the city came through with the property and stuff because it is an awesome site, if you can just look down that road, and that's what the Run for the Wall said, we saw its site, and they just, they said we gotta stop there next year.
Welcome with open arms.
Yes, so, anybody got any questions?
Yeah, just, so this, this wall comes in in three pieces?
Yes, it does.
How do they seal it together? I just, I don't know the type of-
Very carefully.
Very carefully, yeah, and it's not with Gorilla Glue, I'm sure.
Yeah, it is kind of like a Gorilla Glue, it's a mortar that they put in that they use on granite for, and they actually will do that because when they actually set them, there's actually a two-inch threaded stainless steel rod that goes down into this footing here, actually goes down here to hold it, and that was what the engineering, just a little bit of technical stuff on the back of that. I started looking at some of that, and I got worried about, they had so many rods, I said, what happens if we have an earthquake? Or someone hits it, what's it gonna shatter and stuff like that, so. The Monument Company did their due diligence and went off to Washington University and got some of their stress engineers to look at, and they came back with a design, and that was the reason for the engineering change order. I know a lot more about concrete than granite. Like I say, my basic was electronics, engineering and stuff, but it's been a very big learning curve and stuff in this program, so. Any other questions?
So, one thing you did mention, you know, when you said you're five years out, you talked about signs, I'm just wondering, as the council, we need to start thinking about, you know, with the interchange, maybe that we need to see if we can move that up in some aspects, you know, because I think, I mean, it is, it is part of the community, and the more we signage, it would help, I think, people's recognition of it, so I'd like to see if we can maybe have a conversation about that sometime.
Thank you. Are you in the workshop to kind of workshop and talk about how we can move the signing part up? I think we could probably wrap up some of the Wi-Fi issues on that.
Okay. Yeah, I contacted Terry Thorne on that and just said, you know, this is what I'm thinking, what are you guys thinking, what's the rules, what's the regulations, she sent me back all the stuff, I had my friends' MoDOT, and I have to say, MoDOT has been more cooperative for me on this project.
Yeah, it's something, it's a project, 'cause you're working with-
Right.
-MoDOT to try to get this done, and the city needs to work, so it's a real team approach on the signs, but I think the signs are really important to have up there.
Is there any reason why you can do that next month or two months, maybe we'll still workshop to-
Yeah, I don't know why not, and if it's a big budget item or something, I don't know what we're talking about, we could maybe throw it in through the budget for next year or do with some kind of payment contingency, or Terry would shoot me if I said that.
I did a little bit of brainstorming with some of our potential supporters and, you know, kind of things they've talked about as the standard signs, other ones has been like a nice electronic sign-
Oh, really?
-and stuff like that, so, I mean, it's, it's up to the city, 'cause it's your regulation to how you do that, but, but basically, people are open.
I think this project, in all aspects, needs special attention paid to it, so if we need to go the extra mile to do something nice, we need to do it, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I, I present our memorial, as I travel across the country with my other job, and the gift bricks, which did all the pavers and stuff, they're gonna send a team down here when it's completed, and they're gonna feature it, and they'll probably put it on our website, how they do things, and I'm sure we'll get something out of North American Monument Company, and I'm sure we're gonna get something on the Schnucks webpage and stuff, plus it's gonna be featured in the Marine Corps League Semper Fi magazine, and I've already talked to the American Legion and to the BFW, my sister organizations that I work with in Washington DC about doing a featured articles and stuff on this, so, trying to get as much exposure as I can.
Be a lot of exposures through the TV stations, I'm sure too, they'll-
Yeah, as the word travels, I mean, there's a lot of us travel across the country a lot for military functions, and we always take time to go see memorials, and if you haven't been down to Perryville and seen that one, that is awesome, when it's gonna be done, the full replica could be a non-wall, they've really got some good things there in with the National Cemetery to go with it.
Well, I kind of say it tongue-in-cheek, but maybe we need to fundraise for a hat rack for you, because it seems like you wear a lot of hats lately, a little overworked, when's the vacation coming?
Another year or so. I got one more, if I get elected in August, I have one more term on the Marine Corps League, and this is gonna be close to home, so I'll probably be working on this till they put the flag on my coffin.
Like I said, I say it tongue-in-cheek, in all reality, thank you for what you do.
Yes.
I can tell you from, from my heart, and I'm sure from the rest of the board, we appreciate it. You didn't have to take the time to come in and give us updates on what be, but you do, and they're always very thorough, and you've always got new, exciting news for us every time you come in, and I just appreciate you doing that.
Well, thank you, I thank you for the support.
Thanks, Wendell.
Thank you.
New and exciting things, I always like hearing. Terry was unable to, Terry Thorne was unable to be here tonight, so is there someone filling in for her on her item?
I will.
Thank you.
And we have given you guys a couple options for the downtown historical district signs, these will be placed at the market and Veterans Memorial, and at 47 and Main, they're similar to the same signs that we used to Raffle City, and there are 36 by 24, just a couple different wording options, on which one do you guys want?
When looking at the two, in my opinion, historical downtown district makes sense to me.
Me too.
If, if you don't know, you're in Warranton.
Yeah, when you don't know where you're at.
I hate to say that you may be surprised, but I agree with you, I like the top one best.
Well, the other thing too, I think, too many words and letters on the sign make it hard to read as you're driving, and we can sit there and stare at it and see them, but as you're driving in a car, you know, the print's smaller in the lower one, there's too much, too many words, although it's really simple, larger than just for somebody who's not familiar, it pops easier.
Alderman, is that why they abbreviate everything in text messages, 'cause it's shorter and easier to read all your letters?
I don't, I've had text messages till it came to this, I didn't realize when people typed out.
Option one seems like a simple one to me, has anybody else has a different opinion? I wish, Kish should keep the shovel, it's about right, isn't it? Yep. Well, option one, it sounds like it's gonna be, Brian.
All right, that sounds great, that's what we'll go with.
You need us to go ahead and make a motion on that?
I don't think we need a motion on it.
Okay.
That's what we'll go with. And I don't have any operational updates, and the next thing that I have is the monthly marketing business support report. With that, I think a few of you guys were able to make it out to the Two Girls Artists and Gift Market ribbon cutting, which just opened, which is good, and then I wanted to let you know, we're just, we're still getting a lot of contacts from low estate companies, it seems like they're constantly wanting to know what, how to get their properties on lowest, or how to get on lowest to get properties, what properties are available, so that's really a good thing.
It is. Any questions, any thoughts of that?
Okay, the next thing that I have is the monthly annual administrative administration report, and on there, I just wanted to point out, we had two tournaments this last month in June, one of them brought 25 teams, and the other one I had noted on there that they had brought 22, but they actually brought 35 teams last weekend.
Wow, you could tell, because Eric went in, there was no chairs, and his kids have been calling out of farms all over the place, you could tell it was a tournament going on.
Yeah, 35 teams means a lot of people, and currently, we are working on the newsletter because we had gone to the meeting with the school, we're gonna get this out a little bit earlier this year, so if you have any articles, please get them into us by the end of this week.
Does it make, on the newsletter, order of newsletters, is that what you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
about?
Mm-hmm.
I find that, and it's this personal opinion, that if you try to put all six aldermen and the mayor in, it's almost like there's duplication. And I rather think, you know, if you could get three good, meaty stories from three aldermen for each newsletter, and certainly the mayor of each newsletter, I, I think it makes for better reading, because it's really difficult, and I don't think the aldermen are comparing notes. We just have the same thing to talk about. You know, you got one Aquatic Center, you got one interchange, you have, you know, so that's my take on it. I, I will probably not submit one this time around, so I don't know that we need to coordinate it, but...
And we can definitely rotate if that's what you guys wanna do.
I just...
Well, and I know one time we talked about if they wanted to submit any of the aldermen or, you know, we could submit one if we wanted to, but classifying or showcasing some of our employees to kinda get their faces and names out there, because that's something we weren't doing so much.
Right.
And maybe give a little more room for them to be able to speak about something and, you know, especially department heads. You know, sometimes you get to hear from them, sometimes you don't. But people out in the public, to get to know them a little better, and then showcasing people underneath the department heads as well. Because we're, we're starting to see more building inspector spaces, and of course, the police, and, you know, Guy has his guys out there doing road repairs and what be it, you know, so it's, it's always great to have them out there, and so they know by face who they are.
Sure, we can definitely do that.
I mean, if we're gonna rotate alderman stuff, I think we need to somehow tell the public, 'cause I've had feedback where, wow, this alderman didn't put anything in, they must not care, or what's wrong with them? So if we're gonna rotate, I think we just need to somehow tell the public that that's what we're doing, because that's the perception as well. Some didn't write, so they must not care, or they're not that into it. So, and I don't think that's fair either.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I think you're right. We can showcase it up on the very top, that, you know, every...
This quarter, this is...
Every other, yes. I agree. By the way, trying to get guidance for... Do you know how many you got in from the alderman?
I don't. I didn't check with her before she left today.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
All right.
We can definitely do that.
Which next item?
The next thing that I have on my list is the tourism recommendations. So the only thing that we have from tourism is they were approached by Tribute to Veterans' Memorial to have a request for $2,400, which would pay for Amarin to get the electric to the site, and that is a budgeted item, so they recommended that we pay for that.
Yeah, that was from last year, right?
Yes.
One thing we, if I could add something.
Sure.
The tourism commission did this time, in that this coming year's budget, we went ahead and put, we upped it to five thousand per month, and just put it in there automatically so that basically Wendell or somebody from the Veterans Memorial doesn't have to come back each month and request, because this going, what, five thousand a year? Oh, it was five thousand a year? I thought it was gonna be five thousand a month.
No.
Well, Wendell would like that.
Yeah. He'd be his new best friend.
Excuse me.
No, you're good.
Five thousand a year. Okay, I thought it was...
And I think the logic...
Anyway, we did up it, and now hearing, one of the other things that came up was, he mentioned, too, some of the expenses going forward, and one of the things we talked about was somewhere down the road, if maybe tourism could do more for different items as we, 'cause we're looking at maybe reducing some of our expenses on the Autumn Fest, et cetera, like that. So, we kinda left that open. The members of the board are aware of it, and the commission are aware of it, so it's something looking down the road. Also, I would like to say that we do have a new member, you'll, I think, Mallory was at our last meeting, and I think she's gonna be an excellent member. She brings, brings, I think, a lot to the table, so we've just got a couple more to fill, so. And we're looking at, we're looking at where we can draw from, because Janet Pollard, she brought up, she's friends with some people in Hannibal. One of the women that has been on the tourism commission up there from the get-go does not live in the city, though. She works at a company in the city, and supposedly that is, that's allowed. Now, I was gonna have Randy or somebody was gonna check into the state ordinance on it and make sure that was, that was okay, but that gives us a little more leeway, 'cause it's been hard to find some...
The hotel motel.
It's very hard to find, yeah.
Classification, tough.
So that's, so that's...
I'd be very open to that. If that's actually gonna happen, that'd be great. So if you could, at least have Chris check into it if nothing else.
Yeah, we would, we would pull the stuff from Hannibal, so we're gonna have Chris check into that.
Good point. Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have. And I'm sorry.
No, no, you're good. You're good. You brought up some good points. Do you have anything else, folks?
Just that I, I know that Wendell is aware that, like any other government, we can only budget one year at a time, and so that's, Mike, I think what Mike's saying makes total sense. It's kinda like a marker that the tourism commission will know that every year they'll have that five thousand to, to look at, but the Tribute to the Veterans Memorial realizes that that's not guaranteed, of course, because we can only, as a governmental entity, we can only do one budget here at a time.
Well, entertain a motion to approve the tourism recommendations in the amount of $2,400. Show move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Shaw, be signed by Alderman Schultz, welcome up.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shelby?
Yes.
Alderman Castello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
And the last thing that I have for you is a Warrior Avenue extension. The bid tabs for that, we recommend that we go with T.S. Banzi. This extension is from forty-seven to the Aquatic Center, and the amount is $326,000, or $326,030.56.
Amazing. That's about, we paid for the land, just to put a road in. So what are we gonna do for inside the park? How's that gonna be done?
Um, it's gonna be concrete up to the entrance, and then, and the parking lot at the entrance is also gonna be paved, but then it's gonna be gravel throughout the rest of the park for now.
Okay. So is this stretch concrete, obviously, with Banzi?
Yes.
So we're gonna gravel all the interior roads initially until we can come up with funding to actually pave it?
No, it'll probably be asphalt all the way.
Yeah.
That's, makes sense, but on the ground.
Any other questions on this?
Which one are we recommending?
Banzi.
T.S. Banzi. The amount of $326,000.
Show move.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Castello, signed by Alderman Shelby, welcome up.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shelby?
Yes.
Alderman Castello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
And the last thing that I have for you is a Warrior Avenue extension. The bid tabs for that, we recommend that we go with T.S. Banzi. This extension is from forty-seven to the Aquatic Center, and the amount is $326,030.56.
Amazing. That's about, we paid for the land, just to put a road in. So what are we gonna do for inside the park? How's that gonna be done?
Um, it's gonna be concrete up to the entrance, and then, and the parking lot at the entrance is also gonna be paved, but then it's gonna be gravel throughout the rest of the park for now.
Okay. So is this stretch concrete, obviously, with Banzi?
Yes.
So we're gonna gravel all the interior roads initially until we can come up with funding to actually pave it?
No, it'll probably be asphalt all the way.
Yeah.
That's, makes sense, but on the ground.
Any other questions on this?
Which one are we recommending?
Banzi.
T.S. Banzi. The amount of $326,000.
Show move.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Castello, signed by Alderman Shelby, welcome up.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shelby?
Yes.
Alderman Castello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Could I ask the question, not that we've already proven, how, was this in budget? Higher than budget?
It was actually a little over the budget, so, but our, I think when Guy explained at the last meeting for the restrooms and the pavilions, we took out a restroom to help pay for some of this. I think we still may have to take a little bit out of contingency, but we'll...
All right. Thank you.
Any further questions?
I think it was, it was a restroom and a pavilion. No, we added the pavilion.
We took out a restroom and pavilion that's over by the horseshoe pit. We're gonna try and get that in next year's budget.
Where's the horseshoe pit at?
It's by the lake, on the opposite side of the lake.
Where the horses? I didn't see, I'd have to sneak out there. I'm sending horses.
They won't be in yet.
You're doing undercover trick.
They'll be coming in later.
See if we can catch a ride with Alderman Miller, see, see what the...
I was just up there trying to find our coral painted, pretty faces, but I think they probably left them at the building.
They didn't do it, did they?
Absolutely. I got pictures, you wanna see?
Not that, I'm red now.
I will.
Mine was undercover, so no way.
No, I'll keep it my secret.
You can dress up as a stray dog and then die. Well, next we'll hear from our finance officer, Dana Plesk.
Good evening. You'll have a listing of total claims, accounts payable, and utility deposit refunds. They total $909,120.56. They do include a $612,000 payment to Demee on the Aquatic Center, and then other, a couple of the large invoices for the pool park related improvements and interchange utilities. So, again, a total claim listing of $909,120.56.
Did you make the format of this different?
I did. Is it okay, or would you...
No, it's fine. I, I mean, you know, it actually is nicer, because, you know, having the vendor to reference an amount all in the same place, so you can visually, it goes quicker than bouncing, 'cause usually I scroll down to the bottom, and I'm trying to find them within each department, but this is, this is fine.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $909,120.56. Show move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderman Deloitte, welcome up.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shelby?
Yes.
Alderman Castello?
Abstain.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Motion passes five, five zero with one abstain. Is that it?
For that part, I just touch on the financial highlights, and again, these are related to the month of May. So for the general fund, revenues exceed capital and operating expenditures by $347,000. These do include transfers in from other funds that support administrative function of the general fund. In the revenue area, sales tax is at about $2.149 million, as opposed to the budget of about $2.168 million, so about $20,000 below budget, so less than 1%. Plans are below budget by about $141,000, and permits are above budget by $41,000. In the expense area, you'll notice on the detail sheet that every department just about is below budget, and primarily in the area of personnel cost. Again, everyone, every department sees vacancies this year. That's changing now, but one of the biggest ones you'll see is in the Police Department, their personnel-related cost was below budget by about $239,000. So, again, that's probably not the way we wanna see things come under budget, so they worked really hard to change that. Other notable variances in the general fund include a marketing cost about $41,000 below budget. Some street repair projects apply, those type of things net to about $49,000 less than budgeted. In the grounds maintenance area, some repairs, contact services, so about $12,000 below budget. So these are items that are outside of the personnel area. In the enterprise fund, the water sewer fund, total revenues are above budget by about $348,000, and those include industrial sewer, which is $224,000, so that is primarily the Coca-Cola plant. Connection fees, $96,000 above budget, so it just shows to show how much new building we have going on. In the water sewer expenses, they again are seeing the same thing in payroll, so for the Water Department, about $95,000 below budget, includes payroll-related costs, meters and pump repairs, those are the primary categories that are below budget. For the Sewer Department, about $125,000 below budget, again, primarily payroll, but also includes some pump repair and ionized repair, so some things again, just spell a little bit below budget issue. Were there any specific questions for talking about financial statements?
So I've asked this before, you know that summary by fund of the general operating?
Mm-hmm.
Is this an automatic report that comes out? 'Cause to me, I'd do it a little different. I would pull the capital project out.
Mm-hmm.
So if you look at this now, it shows like our total general revenue fund has a surplus a year-to-date of $3,400, like you said, $347,000, but if you pull the capital side out, you get a little different picture of the general operations of the city, and so I didn't know if that was a canned report, or you could manipulate that.
That is canned, but I would very much like to present to the board some other optional reports that they may find useful. So if it's all right, I'll work some things out and bring them forward to you.
Yeah, that would be great, because I always, when I, when I look at these, I always wanna pull capital out, because one's operating, one's capital, and, you know, your operating has to be a positive to support the capital eventually, and so that's kinda my, I'm always looking to pull those things out. Now, transfers belong in the operating side, obviously, 'cause you was moving between operating funds, but to me, if you wanna do something, that would be really helpful.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good job. Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Chief Police Larry Eller.
Good evening. I just have one item for you. It'll be a request for approval of policy concerning command protocol. It's necessary to cover two different Calea standards. It's pretty straightforward. It just lays out succession of command and command and normal operations in exceptional situations.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the command protocol policy as submitted.
Show move.
Second.[1709.54]